Hi, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education's Finance and Audit Committee Meeting. Today is October 26, 2016. We're holding this meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Frank Clark. On behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank you for coming today. The order of today's meeting will include an audit update, a financial update, public participation, and we will conclude and adjourn. As always, I'd like to remind everyone that courteous and professional behavior is both expected and requested. Madam Secretary, please lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this meeting was posted on Monday, October 24, 2016, at least 48 hours before this meeting at the boardroom principal office, 42 West Madison Street lobby, and on cpsboe.org. Thank you.
The Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of Wednesday, October 26, 2016, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Member Furlong?
Present.
Vice President?
Present.
Member Dr. Hines?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
And President Clark?
Present.
Five members present. There is a quorum, and I would also like to acknowledge Ron Marmer, our General Counsel. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's begin with the audit and finance presentations. Andrel, I believe you're first.
What I'd like to do today is walk you through an audit update for second quarter FY '17. What I want to highlight for you today are the results of our risk assessment, along with a couple other minor, relatively minor things. We conducted an enterprise risk assessment, which attempted to look at our overall risk, universal risk profile here at CPS. I also conducted, my team also conducted, a compliance risk assessment. Normally, you would have a compliance risk assessment, or compliance risk would just be a component of your overall risk assessment profile. However, because of the fact that compliance risks here at CPS are so diverse and complex, I thought it was relevant for us to do a deep dive, at least once every few years, do a deep dive into our compliance risks. So we'll talk about that in just a moment. To start with the enterprise risk assessment, what is important to note is that unlike an audit, the purpose of a risk assessment is to help us to begin the process of identifying, evaluating, and prioritizing risk in the organization. It's also important for us to have a risk assessment to define a risk-based internal audit plan, which we will go through today. I think it's also important to note that normally organizations will perform a risk assessment every one to five years. It's really subjective. It's to management discretion and to the discretion of the board. The last time CPS performed one was just on the tail end of that window. It was about five years ago, so it's a great time to update it right now for CPS. When you look at the risk assessment, there are a number of categories that were included: strategic risk, financial risk, educational academic risk, all the way to people, technology, and compliance. And we'll talk about that in just a moment. But I also think what's important to note is that a risk assessment, while it's a point-in-time snapshot of the risk at the organization, risk management is really an ongoing process to monitor, evaluate, eliminate risk, transfer risk, figure out ways that you are best capable, the organization's best capable of addressing that risk and driving towards a sustainable risk management program. So I really look at this risk assessment, again, as a point-in-time snapshot, but an ongoing process to continue to get better at managing risk across the organization, which is something that everyone in this organization is responsible for and does day in and day out, from the board all the way down to line management. To give a sense of the risk assessment process, I have it highlighted here. It started with gathering information, looking at past reports, looking at information aggregated from across the organization. We conducted one-on-one interviews with a number of people across the organization, from education, to finance, to law, even including the Inspector General. We then had a group session with a number of people represented from departments across CPS. And the focus of that group session was to talk about the risk profile at CPS and begin a process to understand and identify the top risk, at least right now, the top risk facing CPS. We then analyzed the information, and we're producing the results that we are presenting to you today. A key output of the risk assessment is what is normally called a risk universe or a risk profile. I think what's important to understand about what you have in front of you is this is a list of possible enterprise-level overall risk facing CPS by what we call major category. This does not mean that every one of these risks are present in the organization right now. It doesn't mean that these risks are urgent risks to the organization right now. Some of them, of course, are. It doesn't take, you know, a rocket scientist to figure out that we have issues when it comes to things like revenue and funding and capital and threats to our academic progress. So again, those things, I think, are relatively intuitive to people who know a lot about CPS. But I also think it's important for us to look at the risk profile, to understand the other types of risks that impact the organization that may not be so high-profile from day to day. For example, looking at the policies and procedures, internal controls, and making sure that they continue to stay strong across the organization. Looking at things like cybersecurity application management, looking at the ways that we engage with our students and different things of that nature. So what this is, again, attempting to do is to give us, as an organization, a view of what our risk profile looks like, and we'll talk about how we'll manage this risk profile going forward. One thing I think that's important to notice, the last line or row there where I talk about reputation. I don't think that reputation is a singular risk here at CPS or at any organization for that matter. I think that any of these risks, should they occur in the manner in which they occur or combined with other risks, can impact our reputation. So I think it's important to understand that reputation, again, is not a singular risk. It's not just a bullet point. I think it's something that we need to manage across this risk profile. The next slide here is just to give you a sense of the risk criteria that we use and we will continue to use as we evaluate risk and rank risk across the organization. These are scales that we've developed. These are scales that are also very similar to what are used in the industry at large in terms of both the audit industry, in corporate world, private world, education, government. It's pretty standard. I think what's important to take away from this slide is that there are two primary ways that you want to evaluate risk. You want to evaluate them on the impact to the organization, all the way from catastrophic impact to rather insignificant, and the same thing with likelihood of occurrence. So something could have a very high impact, should it happen. However, the likelihood of that could be very low. So we'll continue to use these scales as we look at risk and prioritize risk, and we may incorporate other measures into this as we mature our risk assessment process going forward. For example, some organizations use the term velocity when it comes to looking at their risk, not just impact and likelihood. So velocity, basically, will help you measure how quickly that risk can happen. So again, there could be a risk that is rather, you know, insignificant in terms of impact to the organization, or, excuse me, rather catastrophic in terms of impact to the organization. And some of those can take a long time to occur, and some of those can occur overnight. So looking at velocity, for example, may be something that we look at into the future, as well as management effectiveness, how well management feels that they're managing that risk going forward. So, you know, in the meetings to come, we'll talk more about that. So the output, another output of the enterprise risk assessment, as I said before, is an audit plan. This is a tentative audit plan, subject areas that I plan on incorporating into the risk-based internal audit plan in the coming months. Some of the key things to highlight are IT, general controls, and security. So with that, we're going to look at things that impact areas such as cybersecurity. How well are we preventing ourselves from individuals outside the organization being able to access our system on an unauthorized basis? How are we looking at how we manage our systems and our applications internally? You look at payroll. That's a pretty straightforward process there, audit there, in terms of looking at our payroll controls to make sure that they are effective. Based on work that we've done thus far and what we've seen, we do think that they are effective, by the way. These audits are just going to go out there and verify, again, that there are no issues that may exist. If you're to look at the procurement lifecycle audit, it's, again, pretty straightforward. We're going to look at our procurement process from bid or solicitation, all the way to contract closeout, and make sure that we're managing those contracts effectively, that we have strong competition in our solicitations and our bids, and that we're moving forward in the most appropriate ways. Again, for each one of these things, we'll continue to talk about them on a quarterly basis going forward. One thing I think that's important to recognize is that this is an audit plan. Our risk may change, and so this plan may change. I expect that substantially all of this plan will be executed over the next year. But there will be things that come up that may displace some of these audits that are here because of the importance that that issue may have into the future. But I think the audit plan here has strong linkage to the risk assessment that was performed. The last thing that I want to talk about here on this page is enterprise risk management coordination. That's not an audit so much as an activity. And again, we'll talk about that in just a moment with the concept of a risk and compliance committee. But what I'm getting at here is the fact that, again, our risk profile can change from day to day, month to month, year to year, and we need to have an effective process in place where we're managing those risks going forward. And that's what that activity is attempting to do. The next activity I'd like to highlight for you is the compliance risk assessment. As I mentioned, normally, you would see a risk universe or risk profile that would have compliance as a category. Because of the fact that compliance is so complex here at CPS, I thought it was relevant for us to, at least once every few years, to take a deep dive into compliance, and we took this year to do that. When you look at the scope of compliance, and it gives you a sense of the complexity and why I thought it was appropriate to do a deep dive, there are a number of areas that are impacted by compliance, either having compliance requirements that they are responsible operationally for ensuring that we're compliant with, or that they're responsible from a monitoring, oversight, training, education perspective. There's the grant management group. There's OSE. And when you think of EL or English learners, they have a huge responsibility for making sure that we move those programs forward, dual language. You look at early childhood to charter schools, nutrition programs, et cetera. So again, there's wide range, there are wide-ranging compliance requirements that we have across the organization. Before I get into the risk universe for compliance, much similar to what we have for the overall risk assessment, I think it's important to talk about two key roles for departments here at CPS relative to compliance. There's my group, internal audit and compliance, where we do things such as the school audit, school visits, desktop monitoring, time and effort attestation, et cetera. And we're expanding our school audits to have charter school monitoring as well. That is there from a compliance and oversight perspective. If you contrast that with the finance and grant group, they have very important and critical roles as well. And I'd say they're more active day-to-day in terms of making sure that we're meeting our compliance requirements. They're working with our external auditors from various organizations. They're making sure that there's grant verification that happens. They're training. They're creating policies and procedures. But in the middle, there's a lot of coordination between my group and that group by and large to make sure that overall the compliance expenditure monitoring happens and that it's effective, that we provide technical assistance to schools. It's more than, I think we need to do more than just going out to schools and dinging them every time that there's a compliance issue. I think it's important for us to do that from a compliance or validation perspective. But we also have to train them and educate them and make them aware of what is the, how they are to use grant dollars and what are the compliance requirements. So technical census to schools is a role of internal audit and the finance and grant department. And then finally, generically, what we're calling, maybe not so generically, data and budget line remediation. When we see issues, we want to make sure that those issues get fixed. We will include them in an audit report on our side, but we will also make sure that those issues are fixed. The finance or grants group, they're more actively doing that day-to-day. So I just wanted to give some perspective of the different groups and the different roles when it comes to compliance. And some of this was fleshed out earlier this year when we had a reorganization where my group took on some of the compliance function across the organization. But we wanted to make sure that we sort of bifurcated out the roles and made it clear that there's a compliance and monitoring function, and there's a clear operational function. And this slide attempts to show that difference in responsibility. So what you have here, much similar to the overall enterprise risk assessment, risk universe, is a compliance risk assessment, risk universe. And so you'll see the overall risk that we have there, such as privacy and information security, policies, procedures, all the way down to different categories such as grant management, facilities, charter, state reporting, making sure that we meet ISB reporting requirements over to OSE effectively and diverse learners, and making sure that we manage things across these different groups. So as you can see, this would be just one category of the broader risk assessment and why I thought, again, it was so important for us to take a deep dive here so that we can look at it with a special focus and make sure that we are taking the right approaches to meeting compliance requirements and not putting any of the dollars that we receive from the various sources at risk. A few key recommendations also came out of the compliance risk assessment process that I wanted to highlight for you. Now, one thing, one key thing, was to incorporate new compliance procedures into the school audit program. And at the last audit committee meeting, I talked about the fact that last year we did expand the school audit program footprint and scope. We are continuing to expand that footprint and scope now, including more compliance requirements, so that when we go out to a school and we visit a school, we have a more comprehensive audit that's performed. It's not just looking at it from a financial perspective, but it's also looking at it from an operational and compliance perspective as well. The other thing that I think that's important, and what I talked about before, is that we need to make sure that we improve awareness and communication to affected stakeholders of the compliance requirement. So this means training. This means education, making sure policies and procedures are updated. The last thing we want to do is have an issue in compliance that recurs from year to year to year. We want to make sure that people understand the requirements, are aware of them, and that effective remediation occurs. The last finding or recommendation that came out of this activity was the creation of what we're calling a risk and compliance committee that's led by my department, that my department would chair. The role of this group, this committee, is to, at the end of the day, drive mitigation of not just compliance risk, but overall risk across the organization. So when I talked earlier about the risk assessment is a point-in-time risk assessment, we need to have a process where we're looking at our risk and we're managing our risk on an ongoing basis. And this is a role of mostly every department in this organization. So this committee will have representation from nearly every department in this organization. We'll have representation from finance, from education, and grants, and a lot of other representative departments. The other role of this group is to make sure that when there are findings identified, not only by internal audit, but by the external auditor or any organization that comes into CPS, that we take those findings to heart and we put remedial action in place on a timely basis. So you'll hear more about this in the coming meetings. But again, I think this is where we're starting to move towards a more ongoing and robust enterprise risk management program that will take some time to develop. The, I think, next-to-last thing that I want to talk about is what I call external entity interactions. I think it's important for the board and the public to be aware that internal audit also plays a role in coordinating outside oversight activities that occur from a number of different areas. The goals are, there are three reasons that we do this at the end of the day. We want to reduce any duplication of effort. We want to leverage any existing work that my department has done or that another auditor has done. And again, at the end of the day, and this is a theme, we want to make sure that there are findings that we address those findings. You know, I've heard from the board, and I've heard from leadership, that we will not tolerate repeat findings. And to the extent that we can get those findings done, or, excuse me, remediate it immediately, we will, or we will have effective plans in place to remediate those items. So I work with the external auditors, for example, to make sure that those issues are addressed, and finance is taking those issues serious as well. But it's just a matter of having a coordinated effort. To give you a sense of some of these interactions, ISB is probably the one that we have on a more ongoing and regular basis, where we have periodic meetings with ISB or Illinois State Board of Education to talk about any point-in-time issues or concerns that they may have, to talk about the results of their monitoring visits, and, again, make sure that we're driving forward to have effective compliance requirements in place across the organization. Just recently, the U.S. Department of Education was onsite here at CPS, and my team coordinated meetings with other CPS departments as part of their audit, ironically, of ISB. So they were doing an oversight audit of ISB to make sure that ISB had effective oversight activities across all the local education entities across the state. So effectively, the auditor was audited, and we became part of their sample, and we coordinated those activities. Another key activity that's happening right now is with the external auditor. The external audit, the single audit, and financial audit are coordinated primarily by finance, but my team works with them quite a bit. We had a kickoff meeting the other day to talk about all the audit activities that my team does to give us some awareness of the scope of our audit, the breadth of our audits, and the impact that our audits have in terms of what are the recommendations, what are the findings that come out of those audits. So it helps them get a much better understanding of the internal control environment here at CPS, and it's part of their normal process. But in terms of, again, reducing duplication of effort, we're also working with the external auditor to the largest extent possible to have them rely on the school audit work that my team has done over the last year. Last year, you may recall, I mentioned at the last meeting, we did 170 school audits. And the external auditor is working with my team right now to look at the work that we perform so that they can rely on that. And the impact of that is less time for them to complete the audit and less cost to CPS for that audit to be performed at the end of the day. The last key interaction that I would like to highlight is with the CPS Inspector General. I understand that there's a lot of coordination that used to happen with the Inspector General. Since January of 2016, we've been meeting monthly. Since May of 2016 or this year, we've been meeting bi-weekly. And the purpose of that is to discuss audits and non-performing, particularly as it relates to employee and employee conduct and indications of fraud. To date, we referred 10 cases over to the IG for investigation, so we continue to have those meetings and continue to have that relationship. Again, with the monthly meetings, the bi-weekly meetings, there have been some meetings that have been missed. You know, things happen, board meetings happen, and there are things that we have to work around. But by and large, those meetings have happened over the last, since January. The last thing that I would like to brief you on is, at the last meeting, there were a couple key points that board members asked for follow-up on. One was fixed assets, and the other was quantification of financial impact of audit activities. As it relates to fixed assets, the finance group led by Ron Denard has created a team responsible for leading an effort to effectively enhance our fixed asset procedures. That includes monitoring such as inventory counts or cycle counts. What a cycle count would mean, for an inventory count, you would count everything every year, everything every month, every quarter. For a cycle count, you would effectively stratify your assets based on value. You would count your most important, your most critical assets more frequently than things that are less costly or less important, quite simply. So we will figure out ways to put things like that in place as part of that group or Ron's team, and the person responsible will figure that out. They will leverage the HAES software solution, which is an existing platform, to manage fixed assets going forward. The other point, and I won't get into the details here in terms of quantifying the financial impact of audit activities, you know, that's something that I have increasingly started to do as we go out and do audits. It's not a matter of just talking about, for example, that we have had school audit findings, but what is the financial impact of those school audit findings? So everyone understands not only the fact that we need to remediate those issues because from a qualitative perspective, they're important, but from a quantitative perspective, we understand the impact, again, to CPS. And we will increasingly do that for every activity, to the extent appropriate. We will continue to do that for every activity going forward and let the board know, let management know how much the findings, the issues are costing CPS or how much money we are saving CPS or will save CPS if we put cost efficiency or cost and efficiency measures in place. So that's the presentation I have for you today. I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Questions from board members?
So, Andrel, in the future, when we go, when we do these reviews, will you go through, or I should ask, what level of detail do you think you're going to cover with your findings? And again, you know, this is the effort for transparency, to reveal things you find, improvements we have to make. So what do you, what do you suspect you'll, what level of detail you suspect you'll be able to talk about?
At the meetings here?
At our meetings, like, right here, just like this one?
Yeah, yeah. That's a good point. I think that's something that we're, this is a new process here, relatively speaking, for CPS. My goal would be to come up with criteria where we could rank risk by high, moderate, low, in terms of impact to the organization. And I think that we should start out by talking about those high-impact findings with the board. It's the same approach I take with management in terms of my remediation efforts. I'm going to focus on those high and moderate findings first because they have a bigger impact on the organization. And as we get time, we will go and look at the low-risk findings or have management just provide some type of assertion that they've addressed it. So my suggestion, my recommendation, and we'll work through this, will be for those high-risk findings, that we will come back to the board and give them a synopsis of what that finding, what it stated, the impact to the organization, the action that management is, has agreed to take in the timeframe in which that action will occur.
Good, thanks. And I suspect, too, you'll present an active heat map at each one of our meetings so we can see how risks move around on the matrix?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think the, to that point, we started out just by identifying what that universe looks like right now, and we will come back and we'll provide more information in terms of how they look based on those scales, and you'll have exactly, exactly that.
Great, thanks.
I appreciate the effort to quantify some of the financial impact of some of the audit activities. I would, I would love to get a little bit more granular, just in terms of the net savings that you're finding through that. I mean, I think 1,500 payroll hours, I think that's a great thing to capture, 1,500 payroll hours that included inadequate documentation. I'd love to sort of tease out from that, what is the net savings that we did by implementing tighter controls on that, right?
I see.
So I think this is a step in the right direction. I'd love to, for us to get even more granular for the board level to see net-net, what is the outcome on the savings that we're finding?
Absolutely. We'll do that.
Thanks.
Other questions, board members?
Andrel, go back to your Chart 3 and your Chart 5. And this picks up on Mark's questions regarding a heat map. This is the first effort from your area to put together and actually quantify what we believe our high risks are, what our risks are in total. We haven't gone to the next step fully of quantifying or attempting to quantify what those risks are consistent with a heat map.
Correct.
And that's the next thing. That's also something that we would air and talk about very openly and pump it, because that's the whole purpose of it, that also is how a board focuses its attention on areas that could be at risk. And that's a, you know, a major part of what you're trying to accomplish with identifying what our risks are. Talk a little bit more about how you're going about helping the board identify its risk profile, its risk tolerance. That's not a language that I think they are customarily used in an educational institution, and yet, since this is a multi-billion dollar business, it is, you know, a very large business, and these issues are critical to how we run that business.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand absolutely what you're saying. I think that the next step in this process, particularly to your point, risk tolerance, risk appetite, and understanding those types of measures and defining them much the same way that we identified impact and likelihood, I think that we should, over the next couple months, meet with board members to understand and start to document or understand what that risk tolerance looks like, what that risk appetite looks like, and understand how that fits into the overall sort of risk profile here at CPS. So I would expect that- overall sort of risk profile here at CPS. So I would expect that our next meeting in January, we could provide the results of that in this meeting format. But in between that meeting and now, I will make sure that I find time with the board to have those conversations and figure out what that appetite, what that tolerance level looks like, and go from there.
And lastly, the challenge of this type of work is that, I'm picking up again on Mark's comment, you want to do this in a way that is quite open and transparent to the public. That's complicated occasionally, when some of the work that you might be involved in leads to the Inspector General, and there's an ongoing and active investigation. Those things are not aired publicly. But the whole effort, the reason that you establish a risk profile, the reason that you identify those risks, the reason that you put mitigations in place to mitigate those risks, is to do it in a completely transparent way. So there is a balance that has to be struck. But for the most part, short of interfering with an investigation, we want to frankly air our laundry, dirty or not, in a public manner.
Okay, understood, understood. And you will see more of that coming in the following meetings.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ron? You have the challenge of talking about a budget that we haven't approved.
Good morning, board. This is Ron Denard, SVP of Finance. So I'll give a finance update. So we are managing our budget and cash flows. We're one-third through the year. We've achieved $95 million of our $300 million savings target to date. The state has committed $215 million of normal pension costs that we are anticipating that we will receive, and we're waiting for that to be worked out. We will present a revised budget to the board that encompasses the labor contract ratification. We also will have supplemental capital budget that we talked about in the fall, that we'd have a supplemental capital budget, and those public hearing notices will go out shortly. We're also piloting a shared service program, of which we have 40 schools that are part of this program. And as we stated early in the year, that we were centralizing some financial functions that would reduce the workload on the schools, will help us be more efficient, and also help us put in financial controls. We've also been identifying some upside potential in Title I and Title II 2016 carryover due to aggressive reimbursements that the grant department has been working with us on. Now, on the financing front, for short-term financings, we have borrowed $475 million of short-term financing. We have another $475 million that is approved, and we anticipate that we will close on Friday. On the long-term financing front, we're asking the board for authorization for $160 million of refunding bonds. Now, these bonds are replacing high-interest variable bonds with lower-interest fixed-rate bonds, and we anticipate savings this year. We're also asking for board permission for $840 million of long-term bonds for capital projects, well, up to $840 million. We're not sure of the exact amount that we're issuing. A lot of that will depend on market conditions. But the most important part of this, of these bonds are the fact that they have a dedicated reimbursement source, and it will not impact the operating budget at all. So the debt service is a dedicated levy that we've already started collecting, and it will not impact the operating budget. These, the projects that are funded by that transaction are some of the projects that we will do with our supplemental capital budget. We also are looking at other refundings and reimbursements, and we're analyzing and looking at market conditions. If market conditions are right, then we will try to take advantage of that. That's my update.
Board members?
I know you've done this with me several times, and with all the other board members, but why don't you just take a minute and explain to everybody in little detail what a dedicated refunding source means, so everybody clearly understands why this is not like all the other financings you've done?
Sure. So last year, the city council approved a capital improvement tax. So it's a property, it's a property tax that we started collecting already. And this property tax can only be used for debt service, for repaying our bonds. So this is collected, it goes straight to the escrow, doesn't come to us, and it's used to pay bonds back. So it's, this bond is like, as I would say to Director Furlong, it doesn't really get too much better than this, when you have a dedicated source just for debt service, doesn't impact the operating budget, and allows those bonds, that's how those bonds will be repaid.
And the bonds can't be used for, I'm just kind of adding, can't be used for operating the business. They have to be used specifically for?
The debt, the levy has to be used for either debt service, or it could be capital run.
Other questions?
I've got a couple. The refinancing, the $160 million refinancing, that's one of the few opportunities that we've had where we could actually reduce the level of interest rate by doing a refi, the purpose for refinancing.
Yeah, yes. Because of the great work that, you know, the board has given us advice on, and, and the, you know, the balancing of our budget, the market's perception of our financial condition, and because of the market's perception of our financial conditions, our bonds have been trading significantly lower than that original bond issuance. So these bonds are currently at 9%, and we feel that we will be able to come out lower than that and save money.
Are you able to venture a range?
Yeah, but I don't, I don't really want to signal until we go.
But lower?
Yes, absolutely will be lower.
Okay. Much of what you say to us, sometimes in complicated financial terms, but the bottom, the bottom line is that our financial position is stronger, not where it needs to be, that we're able to actually do a refinancing, and ultimately will save money, that our cash, our cash position, while better, is still strained, and timing is part of the problem.
Yes, yes. That's why we need, that's why we need our short-term, our short-term financing. But yes, our, since we've been here, I do feel that our financial condition has improved, but we still have a ways to go. Our cash position has improved, but we still have to continue to work on in the future.
Okay.
I just want to say thank you for that. That helps. For a person like me, that really helps.
You're more than welcome, Dr. Heinz. It's good to be useful occasionally. All right. Have you had no other questions? Thank you very much, Ron.
I'd like to call up Oprah Walls, our Director of Business Diversity.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Paul, the Director of Business Diversity. We've got three, four initiatives that I think you should be aware of coming up in the near future. The first one is our two MWBE policies that oversee our programs are both sunsetting at the end of December. So those policies need to be renewed. We've been going through a disparity study with an outside economist, and he's recommending that those policies and our goals remain the same at 30 and 7, and that those goals are still appropriate. So we've got a construction policy, and we've got, thank you. Is it better? We've got a construction policy, and we've got a goods and services policy. And those goals are at 30 and 7 right now, and he's recommending that those goals remain the same. This economist, he is well-known throughout the arena. He does disparity studies for the city, CTA, CHA, and other, other sister agencies in the city. The next thing that's coming up is our annual outreach event. This, it's been a long time since CPS has done anything like this. So we're inviting all the board members on December 9. This is a tentative date. We don't have a location yet, but we're working on that. We believe that December 9 will be a good date, and we'll be at the Garfield location. But once that is confirmed, we'll make sure that everyone is aware. In that event, we plan to review our FY '17 spending plan. The procurement department will be there. We'll look at what the contracting opportunities are for FY '17, and what the MWBE opportunities are as well. We intend to increase our MWBE database by having this outreach event. We intend to invite at least 100 or so MWBEs out in the field, and we hope that they will all attend. We are in the process also of, we're redesigning our website, and we will demo our new website at this event. We will have members from CHA, CTA, our assist agencies, HACEA, PUSH, and the Urban League represented at this event as well. We will also have to strengthen our connection with our prime vendors, and our sub-vendors will have what's called like a speed networking session, where we'll break out into sessions, and those prime vendors can meet with the smaller MWBE vendors, and connect, and see where there are some opportunities to utilize them on existing contracts, or contracts that are coming up in the future. We will also have on hand financial institutions available for talking about the issues that our MWBEs often tell me about with, which is, they can't obtain working capital, they can't get bonding and insurance. So we'd like for some financial institutions to be there to make sure that those questions are answered on the MWBE's behalf. In addition to those two items going on, we are also implementing a robust software that's called B2G NOW. It is well-known in the industry. Unfortunately, CPS is the last agency to actually onboard this software. CHA has it, Park District CTA, all the other sister agencies. And we've been trying to implement this now for the last nine months. We are almost there. We believe by the end of November that this system will be up and running, and we'll be able to report to the board on a more accurate basis our numbers and how we're doing as far as those contracts. Right now, we have a paper spreadsheet type of system that is, you know, with regard to human error that comes into play. But with this system that we're implementing right now, we'll be able to give you real-time, accurate information on how we're doing with regard to that, those 30 and 7 goals that we've set on our program.
Okay.
Any questions?
I'm just going to ask you to clarify one. I know we know, because you hammer away at us every month, but just explain, so it's on the record, what the 30 and 7 mean?
So when we issue a contract, say it's a million-dollar contract, and it could be in our transportation arena, we want to ensure that 30% of that contract, so $300,000 of that contract goes to an MBE vendor, or multiple MBE vendors, and 7% goes to a woman-owned company, or multiple woman-owned companies. So 37% of that contract should go to smaller subcontracting vendors in the industry.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Just a comment. In our board briefings, and just one-on-one discussions, this is an area where this board pays, I think, a very, very substantial amount of its intentions. I think that the MWBE policies and goals are a baseline, and we strive to always at least meet that baseline, and where possible, to exceed that baseline. There's a lot of rigor around achieving these policies, these objectives. And thank you in your office, because I like the fact that we're not talking in generalities. When we sit down and we're brief, we have matrix, we have numbers in front of us, and we dig deep in those numbers. This reflects, these policies reflect not just the Board of Education and CPS, these are citywide policies. And there's never, in my judgment, any justification, any reason why these policies should not be adhered to, and where there are exceptions. And there are times when there will be exceptions. It should be just that. It should be exceptions, and we should clearly understand why the exceptions make sense. But I applaud you and the discipline and focus you bring to this effort. It is, I think, again, one of our strongest policies, and something that we will adhere to. Thank you very much.
And I'd like to thank you, President Clark, because, because of your leadership and your guidance, the MWBE policies and programs that we have now are actually, they've been elevated. I can't say that in the past, that everyone that sat in your chair actually paid this close attention and pushed us to do what we're doing on each of these contracts. So I thank you and the board members for elevating this to a different level in the organization. And now these policies are taken seriously. I'm called all the time with regard to contracts, and people will not even present to you at your briefings if they don't have the current 30 and 7, or if there's a compelling reason. They have to have a compelling reason as to why they can't get the 30 and 7. So I thank you again for, for your leadership on this program.
That's two nice things that have been said to me today.
One more.
The only thing that I would add to your comments, I really do believe that all our previous boards, I think this has always been a focus of CPS, because there's always been a citywide policy, and we would have to adhere to that. It's just the rigor and discipline, just like the previous conversations with Andrel and internal audit, and focusing on risk, and risk matrix, and bringing discipline and matrix and measurements around things that we say. And that's what you see reflected here. Things get loose, policies that always is adhered to, as much as they should be, if there's not discipline around it. And this board, all of us, have brought that focus and discipline. But you obviously are doing your job very well, and we appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does that conclude our presentations?
That concludes the presentations.
It's now time for today's public comment segment. Madam Secretary, would you please share the rules for public comment?
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, I would like to note that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:30 a.m. this morning. And, Mr. President, we do not have any registered speakers for this meeting.
Board members, are there any other comments, questions? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm moving adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.